Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the November 12th, 2019 work session of the Forsyth County Board of Education. If you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any needed changes to the agenda?
No recommended changes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as shown?
Second.
Oh, a motion by Tom, second by Darla. All in favor? That's unanimous. First up is presentation and discussion. The draft re-districting by with Dr. Bearden.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. I just wanted to let you know the staff has reviewed all the comments we received from our public on the draft that was submitted to the board. As of this point, there are no recommended changes to the lines that were drawn for Poole's Mill Elementary. However, I am going to be recommending next week when I make the official recommendation to you that the students involved in the dual-language immersion program at Kelly Mill Elementary, that we allow them to be out of districted so they can remain at Kelly Mill, and we will provide transportation for those students as well. So just wanted to let you know in advance that will be part of the recommendation. Obviously, you're not voting on it tonight. I also wanted to let you know the staff is meeting at least one more time this week to review the draft and the comments one more time. There is a possibility there might be one other slight modification that we may be recommending, something that came to light very late that we want to take another look at. So we'll make the official final recommendation next Tuesday. But as it stands right now, we've not made any changes to the lines. The only recommended change is again with the dual-language immersion students. So if you don't have any questions or comments, we'll bring that final recommendation back to you next Tuesday night.
All right. Any questions?
Okay.
All right. Thank you for looking into that. Draft school calendar 2021-22, Dr. Bearden.
Same. We did get, again, a lot of feedback on the calendar as we always do. The biggest, I guess, concern or question was fall break falling a week earlier than it traditionally has. And as you know, we've talked about this before, that really has to do with Georgia High School Association and when high school sports are scheduled. We've made it really clear to GHSA that we would prefer to be able to have our fall break the last week in September. So we put them on notice. However, there are hundreds of high schools in the state of Georgia, and districts have varying calendars and varying suggestions. However, it is our goal that for the next calendar that we present that fall break be moved back to that last week in September. I just can't guarantee you that right now because we want to make sure that all of our students and staff members have an opportunity to have a true break. But that will be the goal moving forward. And so with that, there are no recommended changes to the calendar for 21-22. And again, we'll be making that official recommendation next Tuesday night and ask for your vote at that time.
Any questions?
So the following year, we will actually do next year, right?
That's correct. Next fall, we will do 22-23, and the goal will be to move fall break back to that last week of September. We'll see where the GHSA schedules fall into place.
No, thank you for that because I know that when I went to a lot of the local school council meetings and talked to a lot of parents and teachers, actually, they would like to have a set schedule kind of like we do for spring break. And so thank you for that. And thank you to Mr. Turner for reaching out to them and letting them know because we're going to be two years out. That should give them some time to work on that.
Right.
So thank you for your guys' work on that.
Thanks.
I want everybody to have a real break and not have to be back at practice.
All right.
All right. Next, we have school psychology awareness with Brandy Booth, Daniel Fromau, Kristin McWilliams, and Chris Wassell.
Good afternoon. So like Ms. Wassell mentioned, we follow this pyramid here that nationally followed as well, and it's a prevention model to help support students and staff across all levels. And this graphic here, this was designed specifically for Forsyth County. And so it's been really neat to kind of share this with staff and leaders. And especially, I want to point out two things specifically about this graphic. You can see across the middle, that red heartbeat line that you would see in the medical profession. And we like that specifically because while we feel like we do a really good job identifying students through our universal screening academically, if there are, you know, reading or math weaknesses, we feel like we do a good job picking that up, there's really a shift more to, like, let's look at the whole child. And let's see, like, just because they might come up weak in that area of, let's say, reading fluency, doesn't mean necessarily that there aren't underlying things that could be impacting those students' skills in that area, engagement, for example. And so we've really shared this with leaders early on in the year, and they love this concept of really, let's try and find a way to assess and get data on the whole student perspective so that if we intervene with that reading fluency intervention and don't intervene in the student engagement area, we really haven't solved the problem. And so we're really looking at this year, trying to really problem solve across the whole child and ways to really support schools and teachers and really thinking about the child from a whole perspective rather than just identifying those academic weaknesses. Those are important, too, but we want to make sure and really hit the whole child. And the other thing I want to point out is this pyramid, there are no really separation between tiers two and tiers three because the idea is that even if you are a student who may be getting support at the tier-three level, you're still also getting support in the core classroom as a general education student. So really, this MTSS is about the layering of interventions. Just because you might get support for, like, reading fluency at the tier-three level, well, you might be, you're still going to be in the classroom getting the needs of the core curriculum. And so really, it's the importance of the layering aspect that is shown to be most beneficial for students. And that's how we want to support students both academically and behaviorally for the whole child. Do we have any questions that we can answer?
I like that you're getting more to the root of the problem, which could help a kid achieve faster instead of waiting, maybe in fifth grade, if you catch something in third grade, you resolve it sooner and they could just excel faster. So I like that you're really getting down to the root of the problem.
I was just curious also, do you work with the student advocacy specialists that we have, the six of them? I assume somehow that you work closely with them.
Yes. We attend the shared team meetings at each of our schools. They attend those shared team meetings, and we then consult with them when we see them in the buildings.
And then I work with that department as well pretty frequently with their PBIS piece of that in addition. So that support end, and then also the core, that tier-one piece, which is the PBIS systems.
Are you in clusters? I mean, you must be traveling a lot.
That's what I was wondering is how you, like, if you're the dyslexia specialist.
It's not just your time tools. And it's typically in clusters. That's not always easy to work out, but we typically try to stay within a cluster basis.
Does that help you potentially stay with the student longer as they?
Yes.
I had no idea how much your qualifications were.
Well, would the psychologists all stand up, everybody that's here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the CCRPI results. Leanne Rice.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's our pleasure to present today on our 2019 CCRPI results and how we use the data from that to help our schools inform instructional decisions. So the CCRPI is the College and Career Ready Performance Index, and this went through a heavy revision for 2018. So last year's presentation really talked about how we couldn't make those comparisons between previous versions and the 2018. This year's, we can actually make those comparisons, which is fantastic. So as I move through this, everything that you see, where we see areas of improvement, that is a direct comparison from last year to this year. So in the revision, the state values educating the entire child, the whole child. And then it's designed to award points as opposed to denying points. So we see a lot of positives in the newer version of CCRPI, and I think that's reflected in our results. So this slide shows the components. So it's broken down into content mastery, which is previously known as achievement; progress, which is our student growth percentiles; closing gaps, that used to be the achievement gap component. And one of the differences in closing gaps is it's direct comparisons for each school to itself. So we're looking at, from content mastery, from achievement, we're looking at how did each subgroup and each school do on the test compared to the previous year at the same school? And then readiness. So essentially, are we putting the pieces in place with the scheduling and the achievement related to literacy that's preparing those students for the next level? And then graduation rate. And this slide shows the same components again on the left, and on the right, you can see how it breaks down into the indicators for each component. So there's the subject areas that are in the milestones at the top, and then the areas that show, that demonstrate growth, ELA in math, and then our access scores. And then closing gaps, the improvement targets, readiness, broken down into each area, and then the graduation rate, both the four-year and the five-year graduation rate. These are our CCRPI results for 2019. And so the column on the left shows the district score for each level. So that's the average of all of our scores calculated by the state. And then on the right, we have the state average for each level. And as you can see, Forsyth County schools is performing considerably higher than the And this slide shows the comparison from 2018 to 2019. So this is what I was, where I was mentioning, we can now start making that comparison as long as the state doesn't change.
Till they change it again.
We can from one year to the next, see, are we making that growth in both achievement and progress that we're looking for at each level? So everything that's in a green column is an increase, and so we're very proud that we saw increases at all levels in the system. And then on the right, you can see the state. And so the state did have the increase at the high school level, but not at the other levels.
Before you move on.
Yes, sir.
I think it's just important to note that when you're a high-achieving system as we are, to see your percentage points go up to 2.8%, that statistically is very, very significant because it's very challenging to move that needle when you're already performing at a very high level. And as Tim pointed out, for us as a district and then all three grade levels, elementary, middle, and high, we made progress. I mean, kudos to our students and staff and community, everybody working together to make that happen. That's pretty unusual for a system our size to see that. Actually, be a great big gold star on that slide.
Well, that's because you're not just looking at the data, using the data to figure out what you need to change.
Right. Exactly.
Is there any correlation of why middle school across the state? Is it just raging hormones?
That's the same thing.
Why, I mean, obviously, it's not just statewide.
That information will definitely become more apparent as we meet with our colleagues from other systems, and we're comparing, we're looking at that data, and the state will share more of that with us moving forward since CCRPI was only recently released. But when you dig down to the component level, and you'll see here in a few minutes, one of the things that the annual show, there are certain indicators where at certain levels, grade level clusters do score lower, or certain trends that do take place. Closing gaps is one of those in particular, where I mentioned that you're comparing yourself to how you did the previous year. And so there is some, so essentially, when we look at the data for closing gaps, if we see a high score, meaning that in, when we're talking about achievement, we met, if we meet the improvement targets for each subgroup in achievement, that equates to a green flag, and the more green flags you have, the higher the score. The challenge is to then not pay attention, not only pay attention to the areas of red and yellow, which indicate progress but not yellow, progress but not hitting a target, red moving backward. I think what happens often is people focus on the areas of need, but if you don't also pay attention to those green areas where we met the targets and continue to increase, then that score is going to drop. So I think that's why across the state in closing gaps in particular, there was a drop in that closing gaps component.
You can only focus on so much at a time.
That's right. That's right. It's really a matter of continuing the great things that are taking place, and as new things jump onto our radar, we don't lose track of the things that we were doing that were working well.
Okay. Thank you.
So that was a very nice segue into our close and crows. You know, just from looking at our statewide data, we are, as Dr. Bearden said, a very high-performing district, and we have, at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high, very successful performance across all of our schools. As a school system, we had the highest score of all our county school systems. We were third overall behind the charter schools and Bremen City. So a very, very excellent performance from us.
Which is where I graduated from high school.
Oh, congratulations. But, and as Tim and Kristin, as you referenced, we want to pay attention to what we're doing well so that we continue to do that, but we also always have room to grow. And so some of our grow areas, when we look at student growth, we want to make sure that we're taking students from where they are, from our highest-performing students to our struggling students, and make sure that all of those students are growing. We also want to look at our closing gaps, and especially, as we mentioned, in the middle school level, that was an area of need for us. And that's looking at those individual subgroups. It's looking at our different ethnic groups. It's looking at students with disabilities, English learners, economically disadvantaged students, and making sure that we're meeting their needs where they are. And then our readiness area, we're looking at literacy scores, and that fits in well with our literacy initiative, the K-12 literacy initiative that we're focusing on.
For those subgroups, are numbers not increasing also, which makes that more of a challenge, the total number of students in those subgroups?
We're seeing, too, some schools, you have to have at least 15 students in a subgroup to count statistically, and we're seeing schools that haven't previously had subgroups that are now getting those numbers high enough to count as subgroups, so they haven't been an area of focus, and now they are. One thing that I'll say, our middle school principals are very data-driven, and at our last principal meeting, when Tim and I were working on CCRPI data with them, and they were looking, they all got together and were looking at their subgroup data and seeing areas that they needed to focus, maybe English learners is an area of looking at that growth. And what's nice is we don't use our data just as a reflective measure. We're really looking at it and seeing, what do we attribute to the scores that we receive? What's the story behind those numbers? We're looking at specific groups of children. We're looking at instructional strategies, and we're tying it into our instructional framework so that we take that information, and now we're planning ahead. And so you'll see things like different vertical teams are analyzing their data together, and as a collective group, they may be focusing on a particular subgroup, like the central cluster is looking at their English learners because they have a high population, and they're looking at strategies like a PSYOP model, that training their teachers on using different instructional strategies within that model to help meet the needs of those students.
Imagine as they move up different grade levels, they keep the continuity of working on a certain thing and not just mastering it that year, and we did better.
Right.
But the next grade level, the next middle school, high school can continue that effort.
And I think, as you're saying, with the middle schools, looking at when you're going from an elementary to a middle to a high, when we do build that continuity, we're strengthening the skill set of those students to be successful at the next level.
And it's also, when you talk about the subgroups, the smaller the subgroup, so we talk about, you may not have a target until you have at least 15 students. But if you look at an elementary school where you have third, fourth, and fifth, if we look at a subject that's being tested across all three grades, which is ELA and math, we may have 40 students in a subgroup. And so their data is what's being calculated when we look at those subjects. For fifth grade, where we only test science and social studies, if we only have 16 students left in that subgroup who are in fifth grade, now it's very volatile because you could have two or three students who score in one direction or the other, and that really moves the number as far as that data.
And for our fifth and eighth graders, those are an entirely different group of students each year that are calculating that data. And so for, when you're talking about an elementary school that's taking third, fourth, and fifth graders, that's a much larger sample pool to pull that data from, and you're taking two grade levels that stay consistent, adding one new grade level each year. But when we're looking at science and social studies, that is a more volatile area.
That's why you really have to drill down, and that's what Tim and Leanne are helping schools do, is to drill down into the data and, to your point, the story behind the number.
Absolutely. So one of the things that we really look at, we know that we're a high-achieving district. Our content mastery is the highest in the state. And so the next area that we really look at is that growth, that progress. So this slide is showing you all of the school districts in the state. The bubbles are representing each different district. The larger the bubble, the larger the school system. We're highlighted in blue. The higher the bubble is, is showing higher achievement. The farther to the right the bubble is, is showing higher growth. So we want to be in that upper-right quadrant. And you can see compared to the other districts, we're doing very well in achievement, but we're also doing very well in growth compared to those other school systems. What we're able to do through the SLDS system is drill down to an individual teacher's classroom. So that teacher can look at her students and see, she'll have bubbles like this for each one of her students. And so we use that to help a teacher look at her instructional practices, and no matter what the achievement level is for a child, how far have they grown throughout the year? As you said, we have lots of data that we consider. CCRPI is just one small piece of what we do. Tim and Susan and I, as the assessment accountability team, we really do, our job is to serve the schools, to serve the staff and the students, and to help them look at their data and see what that story is behind their needs. So we look at all these different things to help schools with their school improvement planning. We also look at different ways that we serve the district. So when we have our principal and AP meetings each month, we're meeting both at a level, elementary, middle, and high, but also with our vertical teams and talking and helping them see how to analyze data. Tim is the accountability coordinator, as well as Elena Zink, and the level directors go to every school and review data, and they help them design their school improvement plans, looking at their individual needs and what that school community needs. Each vertical team also has a support director. I support the North District, so we go to each of those schools, and we look at them as a collective vertical team, how we can support their work in what they're doing. And then the data teams process is probably one of the most critical because when we're looking at milestones, that's a once-a-year measurement at the end of the year that we're then reflecting back. When we look at data teams, we're looking at real-life data in the schools right now from assessments that children are taking, and we're looking at who's doing well, who's not, looking at our instructional practices, what can we change and modify and adapt to meet their needs in the process. And all of this supports our new instructional framework as we're looking, working with schools on the planning and the implementation and the assessment. That assessment piece is critical. It's not something we just do at the end. It's something that we do all throughout the instructional process.
I wanted to make sure we showed you the school improvement plan template. We've revised it for this year. And as Leanne mentioned, that I get to visit with each admin team, and one of the great things about that is to talk through this document. It's one that we truly believe is meaningful and applicable to the work that's taking place in the school. And the great things about meeting with every team individually is we're able to help them to make connections to the work that they're doing in their building and their colleagues. So during those, so I'll meet with them, and we'll talk through what have they identified as an academic need, a SMART goal, and then what's the evidence that points to that, and what do they believe the root causes are? Then when we look down at the action steps, those are all the things that are taking place in the building to reach those goals. But the even better part is we're able to then connect them with all of the other school leaders throughout the system so that they can collaborate on goals where they're compatible and assist each other with developing the action steps. So it's very rewarding work, and we always approach it from the lens that, yes, there are fantastic things that are happening in every building, but we always want to look, pay attention to the details and where we can continue to make those improvements and make sure that we're setting up every student for success. So here's our contact information. If there's anything that we talked about that we can provide more information for you, please feel free to reach out to us.
Just a quick question on the school improvement plan. What's the timeframe? Now you've got the CCRPI, you've got the data, as you go to school by school and you review it, and they draft up their plan, like, what point does every school have their plan in place and then figure out, I assume, professional development or whatever they're going to do? When is, what's the timeframe?
So the way this works is as the data rolls in throughout the fall, you know, it begins in the summer with the milestones data, the school starts to develop their goals and anything new that they want to implement that year. As more data comes in and they shape this plan, they finalize this by January. So the end of January is the target date for this plan to be complete, and that lasts throughout the calendar year. But it's really, it's really an ongoing, it's a live document that they continually revise. So, you know, they'll put everything in here, you know, and submit it by January, but they can jump back in in March if, let's say they have a new piece of climate data and something that they want to go in and tweak. The numbers came in, and they want to move that target, they can go in and adjust this plan at any time. So it really is that continuous improvement instead of something that we're just setting in place one time during the year.
Are the schools still utilizing the local school council to help with their improvement plan?
Okay. Good.
I know I've been at the meetings when they present that, so the parents and the teachers have a better understanding of what they're working on for the coming years.
Yeah, I was at Mashburn's Local School Council a couple weeks ago, and that's exactly what they're doing, yeah.
And when you see these plans published on the school data profiles on each school's website, you will notice differences in the goals. It can be an academic goal that's looking for a particular outcome. So those outcome goals might look for an increase in progress, or it might be an increase in achievement on a particular milestones area. But you'll also see process goals in there because there are other types of goals, there'll still be a SMART goal, but it'll basically be something where we are taking, we would like to see a particular strategy implemented throughout every classroom in the building. And so you'll see both types of goals in here, all leading to, you know, increased instructional improvement in every, you know, throughout every classroom.
I think what I see as we look at, especially CCRPI, you know, it's multiple data components, and y'all may, you know, kind of touched on it, but that's the key thing. It's not just testing.
Right.
You know, parents always see testing, and that's what we need to improve, is testing and grades on test. But this is evaluating the whole child, and that's one of our strategies that we put in a long time ago, and I think we're now seeing the fruits of that data. Because so often, we focus on that test, and it's not just that test. The test is going to come. That's just part of the work we do on the whole child. So it's important to point out that we put in goals for the whole child, and that the test scores just kind of come. That's just how we happen to measure them partially through CCRPI.
And to Nancy's, to Nancy's point, we just hope we see them stay the course for a period of time because if it changes again, then you're kind of start back over with a new, you know, thresholds, and so.
How do we get that recommendation to the state?
It's been, it's an every-year conversation.
We are well-represented in that area, but I will tell you, because, you know, there was, there was a press release on it. When these results were released, as you saw on that previous slide, the state went backwards. And the governor made a comment, and I'm just paraphrasing, his concern was, you're seeing graduates, graduation rates improve, for example, but why are we moving back as a state on CCRPI? Is this an actual, is this the right metric to use? And so when I read that, of course, caution lights come on. Does that mean, okay, we're going to go through another iteration? I don't know. I mean, it'd be interesting to follow. But we, you know, as a school system, obviously, we improved. So, are you hearing anything?
Exactly what you said is what we heard.
Yeah.
But I will say that we approach, or a couple things. One, the second goal on the live document is a culture-climate goal. And so those are the two goals that every school has, because I'm very glad that you mentioned that. The other thing is that every, the way we approach all of this is that the data that comes into us is what we use to inform instructional decisions. None of this work is done because of the score that we want to receive. The work is done because it's the right work for the students, and because we're using the data to inform that instruction, we see the benefit of that in the school.
That's such a great point, and I should have finished my comment by saying, it doesn't really matter what they come up with, with a metric, we're doing the right work. I think our kids are going to do just fine, no matter what it is. But it would be nice to be able to make an accurate comparison year to year. That's really what I meant when I made that comment.
Yeah, I think, and working with the School Board Association that we're all a part of, taking that message to DOE and to the governor to make sure they're clear on this is good data and we need to continue the path.
Right.
And start looking detail at why it is what it is.
Right.
How long have we had CCRPI?
2012.
2012.
2017.
Is this the first time it's been the same for two years?
That was another time it was, wasn't it? First three, four years, it changed every time. First three, four years it changed every time.
Right. It changed when, the change from CRCT to the EOCT. And then when we changed to the EOG, it changed again.
It's the letter game.
So yeah, it's refreshing to be able to make a direct comparison.
Right. State Superintendent Woods was elected. One of the things he campaigned on was really looking at the whole child and not just achievement and you were making that point. And so this new CCRPI metric, I think we agree does a better job of measuring the whole child and we're not just looking at the score, the test score. But we'll see where it goes from here.
You guys did a great job.
All right. Very exciting now, policy DJEAST revision with Mary Hammel. I'm not sure if this is going to glow as much as what we just saw.
No, it's not. I'm not going to blow you away with this. So you should have your screens in front of you, the changes we made highlighted yellow and the other side of the changes will be the words specifically highlight or stroken out. And all we were trying to do was just to clarify a few things with this DJEAC that are currently happy with the P cards. So for example, under one, we added see other cabinet level personnel as designated by the superintendent to make sure we cover those people who are given those cards. Also, we added under sentence three, four designate cards besides superintendent cards. As you can see under four, we struck out specific items and just put examples included but not limited to to make the language sound more flowing. Under five A, we made sure we're specifically saying individuals can't use this for travel. They have to use their own credit cards. Then under seven A, it was confusing what we were trying to say there. So basically we just struck out that entire sentence and just added take steps to minimize sales tax paid by use of sales tax exemption forms. And the reason we did this is, believe it or not, we still have people going to different locations throughout the state of Georgia and not everybody corporation wise is aware of what the sales tax form is. And a lot of times they want to accept it. So we have people who are being charged sales tax even though they had the sales tax form and we don't want to penalize those people for that situation.
It's the staff at the hotels that understands.
So those are just the small changes we made to this policy just to make it more clear. And we're recommending that you approve these changes going forward and then we'll put it post, I believe for 30 days.
We do.
Right.
Vote on in December.
All right, thank you.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
We're going to move into our construction update with Mr. Wenning, but if anybody is not, if anybody would like to exit, now would be a good time. You're welcome to stay and enjoy, but if you have other things or dinner.
We're looking at our team of psychologists and you're more than welcome to stay. I know you've got a long day. If you need to leave, go, I mean.
Do you want to see the new schools? Show some good pictures.
Thank you so much.
It's your week.
Yeah, it's your week, yeah. Give you a break.
Thank you for all your work. But we love your stuff.
Don't, don't. Construction people need the psychologist.
Don't be offended by that, Tom.
I think they're pretty busy.
He can clear a room.
All right.
Fortunately, the capital program continues to proceed extremely well. Beginning with our high schools, pleased to share with you an aerial of East Forsyth High School. You know, great from where we were right spring was groundbreaking and here we are. We have all the slabs on grade in, the site utilities are all in and the rough grading for the 90 acre site is complete. And I mention all that just because that's so critical with winter weather coming. So those three achievements were pretty significant. You see structural steel progressing throughout the main building as well as masonry. And in addition to the building, you'll see significant site development. Some of the roads are already in, the parking lots, the curb and gutter.
What's to the far left there of the main building?
The detention pond and, oh, construction, CTAE.
Is that what they?
The off.
Wait, yes, something about the steel.
Yes, yes, that's the CTAE, the construction building. This is the backside of the project. So in this area, softball, baseball fields, we're going to have a great elevated football stadium and football field in this area.
It's going to be great.
So we're very pleased to hit the milestones of where we're at, being very well positioned so that we don't lose time in winter weather where in Clement weather, not only do you lose that day, but you can go backwards in the project. So fortunately, we've overcome some of the site challenges leading to this point and obviously a lot of work left on East Forsyth High School, but we're well positioned. Similarly, at West Forsyth High School, what was critical was to get the roof complete, which it is now. Brick is currently being installed. This photo is a couple of weeks old. Windows go in, the brick needs to go in first, so then the windows follow and the windows will be installed beginning next week and that's just a quick two week process. So again, being dried in for winter weather and then having three, four months of interior fit out for the 20 classroom addition at West, extremely well positioned as we go into winter weather. Looking at our high school projects that I didn't show you photos on, we've completed now the punch list on Alliance Academy parking deck, the central stadium, South Forsyth High School football and baseball additions, as well as the three performing arts center addition renovations at North and Central and South. And I say that to say that that's critical, that that gets out of the way as we now not only have East moving, but with ACE and PAC, fortunately, we've hit the ground running on ACE and PAC. You see a lot of the trees, logging has already begun. We've got another couple of weeks of that. Then the pond gets installed for detention and then mass grading will take place starting approximately three weeks. We have our groundbreaking next Tuesday at 5:00. Also, we had the kickoff meeting with the contractor, all the designers, and we're thrilled that 20 subcontractors are already on board, meaning, you know, it takes time to buy out and we're just thrilled that there's a real sense of urgency with this contract that's performed extremely well for us on some past jobs. So we're off to a great start on ACE and performing arts. Moving on to our elementary schools and middle schools, good shot of an aerial of Pools Mill Elementary School. The roof is now complete. You see similarly parking, curb and gutter complete and grading is complete. Brick is substantially complete now on the project and windows complete. So we're really now working on temporary heat, which will start next week, which will allow all the interior finishes to continue. So again, extremely well positioned to get to this point of the project before winter weather comes, allowing for the three to four months that a project typically takes for interior fit out. There's just another angle of that. So Pools Mill, extremely well positioned. Some of the projects that we didn't have photos on yet, Hendrix Middle School, fortunately we have the land disturbance permit kickoff meeting with Forsyth County Thursday. That allows then site work to begin. We have our groundbreaking scheduled for next Tuesday at 2:00 for Hendrix. Similarly, now the James W. Buckley has completed the design for Hendrix. That allows us to move forward with the next phase of the James W. Buckley designs for Lakeside Middle School cafeteria expansion, the CTAE ag and science additions, as well as the technology lab modifications at several of our middle schools. Similarly, Elementary School 23 now, design in progress with Smallwood Reynolds and the Chestery Roof is substantially complete now for Chestery Elementary School. Any questions on the program?
Hope the cold weather doesn't be this week and if you could order nice weather for Tuesday, we would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. All right. Timeline for building improvements at work. This is good stuff.
We all told you before.
No, no, I know where.
It wasn't anything personal, I think, so we're good.
Something the board is very excited about.
Yes, so good afternoon. When I was first brought in, Dr. Bearden challenged me with looking at some building improvements throughout the district and all of our schools and also gave me a tentative budget and told me to hit the ground running when I first came in. And it's very easy from a facility side, you can go through a budget pretty fast by just doing painting and flooring. But the way I've always operated is the people that live in the building, it's very critical to get their input to make sure that they're on board with what we're doing because my priorities may not be what their priorities are. So to me, it's important that we go from that starting point and back. So what I did is I asked for every principal's feedback, asked for them to send me a list of needs that they see as a priority for their school. With only a few modifications, we told them, please no bond projects, as in don't ask for 20 classrooms, things of that nature. These are things that we want to be able to do is come in and kind of give your buildings those improvements that you're wanting to get done that you just don't have time to manage or take care of. So we were very happy. They started sending those in very quickly. However, that came the hard work because I also decided not to go shop this out to a construction company to kind of manage this for us. I thought it was very important to save that money, do the conservative side and yes, it's more work on our people, our maintenance, but to me, putting that money that I would have spent on a company, I can put that right back in to complete more items here. So to me, it was important to put the money back into our schools. With that said, I believe you guys have a list in front of you of the items. This last part of our process for the last month, month and a half, been working with our team with Greg Pruitt and Tim Emerson and Lee Rowe, because a lot of this stuff falls into carpentry and things of that nature. We've been really putting our numbers together. Please know that we did not go out and bid all of this already because we wanted to get an idea of pricing. However, in Forsyth County, I've learned we do a lot of work all the time. So we have square footages and costs of other areas that we've done. So we've been able to take those costs, even though they've been very recent. So we kind of had an idea of how to budget and go through. And with that said, that's why the list that you have in front of you is what we truly believe we can accomplish under the budget that Dr. Bearden has provided me. So we've done a very conservative approach. We will do as much as we possibly can. And once the actual hard numbers come in, once we're actually completing tasks, I'll always do an update every month about this sheet as well as looking at any money that, hey, we came out under. And then we'll go back to our list to look at what other things we can come on and possibly do. The last part is, is my team also in all four leads, we have some ideas that we truly feel need to go onto this list, but I want to do the schools list first, make sure we have the money there to do that and come back and look at that, possibly from our maintenance side that can help us in the long run. That's kind of the process. You do have a list. Are there any questions or?
I just want to say, I know we're excited about this. We went through the downturn in the economy and we ended up, we had to build schools, we had to rebuild our staff, we had to focus on that. And now we're at the point of kind of play catch up on some of these middle and smaller projects that had to sit on the back burner. We plug away the necessary things, but now this is stuff that we're going to play catch up on. And I think we heard this when we were doing the bond. Our bond is our big ticket items, million dollar air conditioner and things like this. This is stuff that's a normal maintenance that people want to see get done on a routine basis. So we're going to do a big push on this kind of stuff and then we're going to try to plug away and stay ahead and catch up on things. So I love that you're doing this and really listening to what the staff and the students need at that school to make their day to day lives better, whether it's painting or flooring. It's really across the board and also doing this all at one time is going to allow you to bid out projects together and get a better price and do things in a ball of whitches.
And again, that's kind of why we're looking at it. We're breaking it down by, you know, we're talking about the bottle fillers. We already researched about getting a larger bulk item because I get a price break every 15 I buy. So again, being able to be conservative and find those price breaks as well is very important. We're already ready to go on this. We've got things ready to start that we can do automatically because we want to try to get started on this as fast as possible, just with the understanding to know the paint and the flooring, we don't want to disrupt. So the painting, we actually have four or five schools that we think we might be able to attack over Christmas break, which is, you know, but the flooring, we just don't want to be too intrusive with them. So again, just bear with us as we kind of go through that.
That was my question because you'll have to do lots of it in the summer, I would assume, or the break.
Yes. And then my plan is, is once you all kind of, we look at this and we're ready to go, I will plan on sending each and every principal a specific email listing to them every item that we will be completing and also a rough timeline of when it will be complete. So that language, I'm very transparent with them so that they aren't asking and things of that nature be upfront and honest.
So you're saying that everything on this list here is within the budget that Dr. Bearden gave you? Everything there, okay.
Well, yeah, this is definitely the right.
It's a big list.
It's the right step in the right direction and, you know, not only for a list for you to start with, but now we have a list that you can add on to. So when we start working on next year's budget and going into next year's cycle, we have a good starting point. So thank you for all your work and being a conservative with it. We really appreciate that.
Yes, coming from a district that's a small district and we don't, you have to look at every single penny all the time. It kind of helps, even though my staff sometimes I ask too many questions and force a little bit more, so.
Well, this is good as we go into budget season. This will knock off a bunch of things, but then when we do the budget, look, say, okay, what do we need to have in an MNO next year, the year after, the year after to kind of keep looking away on this stuff, so.
And I can say the principals have been very receptive. They're very excited about this and anything that we can come in and do, so we're happy to do it.
Thank you so much.
Good. Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it.
All righty, a lot of good stuff tonight, wouldn't you say? Any future agenda items anybody needs to? All right, is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, psycho by Nancy, all in favor? Thank you all.